If Rockingham can, that's instead of getting.
It was from Rockingham?
No, maybe I'm just saying, Rockingham said too, now we got one.
You ready? Y'all ready? All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We've got a gavel. All right. This, uh, Planning and Community Development Meeting of the County Commissioners is called to order. If you'll please stand for the invocation. Your heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we'd like to thank you for all your many blessings. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here to do the business for the county, Lord. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance and your leading in everything that we say and do. We ask for travel mercies home tonight, Lord, and in your name we ask these things. Amen. If you continue to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If I could get some approval of the agenda.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Okay.
All right. The public comments, there's no one signed up for public comments, so we can skip that and we'll go straight to the public hearing. And the presentation. Yep, by David.
Good afternoon. Uh, first thing we got on our agenda in your agenda packet is a request from Lit Creek Solar, and they're requesting a fencing modification on their rezoning petition 19-891, uh, which was approved October 1st, 2019. Uh, the ones that were on the board at that time, this was a large scale, our first large scale solar facility, uh, 616.67 acres that was approved in the Walnut Cove area. A large portion of this project, uh, that's the county's portion of it. Uh, another large portion is within the town limits of Walnut Cove. Uh, the approved site plan showed that there would be an eight-foot chain link fence with two-foot of barbed wire as the approved fencing type to go around, uh, the facility. Uh, the applicants have requested that this be modified and requested to amend their conditional zoning approval site plan by proposing an eight-foot tall wildlife permeable fencing option with no barbed wire. Uh, and before they could change this, this was, uh, in the purview that the board would have to amend, uh, the site plan and allow the applicant to change the fencing type. Uh, the town of Walnut Cove, uh, has already, um, approved this in April. Uh, the planning board looked at this and stated that, uh, recommended unanimously, uh, that the proposed fencing modification be allowed. Uh, and the main reason was consistency with the, uh, project as it moved from the town limits out into the county's jurisdiction. Uh, we have, uh, representatives of Lit Creek Solar here, uh, the attorney, Tom Terrill, who presented, uh, much of the case at the, uh, public, uh, hearing in October of, uh, 2019. Uh, and they can answer the questions and present the type of option, uh, the wildlife permeable fence option. You have that in your packet, as I brought sure, and a picture of a solar facility with that type fencing on it.
Do you want to proceed with, um, the representatives going ahead and, or did we have any questions for David? Okay, we'll go ahead and let them do their...
Thank you. I'm Tom Terrill, law, lawyer, attorney for, um, Lit Creek Solar. Proud to be here tonight. Um, I would say I'm jealous of your chairman being on the Outer Banks, but I'm gonna be on the Outer Banks myself next week in Rodanthe, and I cannot wait to, um, get out of here and down there. Uh, if, if you haven't heard, or you did not know, the National Electric Code requires every developer of a solar facility to have one of two things. At a minimum, you have to have either a seven-foot fence, or you have to have a six-foot fence with one feet of barbed wire on top of that. And that's been the standard. Uh, the town of Walnut Cove, when it wrote its ordinance, it required a ten-foot fence, uh, eight feet plus two of barbed wire. And although it was clearly excessive, uh, that was what they required, and that was not an issue. In the meantime, there was a trend in the industry that Pine Gate Renewables, the parent company to Lit Creek, was very sensitive to and decided it wanted to begin complying with it. That trend was really a continuation of what has been called the Wildlife Corridor Movement, and it, uh, it has a lot of proponents from people who hunt, a lot of proponents from people in the environmental industry, who have come together 25 or 30 years ago, saying, "When we develop, we ought not develop in ways that block wildlife from moving along the corridors that they need for mating and for food." Uh, and then some companies are sensitive to it, most are not. Many of those wildlife corridors go along, uh, streams and are in wetlands that you can't build on anyway, but in connecting them is important. When solar farms came along about 10 years ago, they were not an issue. Solar farms back then never were more than 50 acres, but starting in 2017, with changes imposed, uh, to legislature at the, by the lobbying of Duke Energy, all of a sudden, these solar farms, in order to get a contract to sell power to Duke, you had to have a facility that was not 50 acres, but 500 acres or 1,000 acres. That's the only way you could do it and still sell your power, but that created the problem of chain link fences being so big on such a project that they were starting to close off the wildlife corridors. And many people, uh, hunters have complained, uh, and the people, again, in the environmental side of things, because a chain link fence for many types of animals is a wall. Uh, skunks, possums, uh, raccoons, uh, foxes, there are many more, uh, mostly animals. They cannot get through it, and they can't get around, and it separates them from their food supply and it separates them from where they would normally be breeding. So it's an interrupter, it's disruptive. Then the North Carolina chapter of the Nature Conservancy with its biologist and others comes up with an idea for a fence that meets the National Electric Code on the one hand, but that also allows most small animals and game animals and others to pass through. And a small child cannot get through it, and it's called wildlife permeable fencing. So, um, Pine Gate or Lit Creek, for the portion that's in Walnut Cove, approached the town for a variance, and the, the town planning board, acting as their Board of Adjustment, enthusiastically jumped on that. They saw it, they realized it. Uh, just like you, they know the local, the, the geography of the area where this is, they know where the streams are and, and all, so they quickly did that. Well, we had imposed the Stokes County portion, the requirement of the Stokes County fence, based upon the original Walnut Cove fence requirement, because we wanted consistency all the way around. Well, now that we're trying to do wildlife permeable fencing and the Walnut Cove portion is going to be different, it's going to be eight feet without barbed wire, what we're asking you to do is to allow us to be consistent. Uh, we're not getting out of, and this is probably the most important thing for me to say, we are not getting out of any requirement that you originally imposed on us. We're only asking to, you to modify the original ordinance as to a provision that we voluntarily placed in there, so that Lit Creek Solar can now do the right thing and it can join, uh, still a small group of companies that wants to, um, have a environmentally sensitive facility that allows wildlife passage. So, if, given that, I'm glad to answer any questions. We certainly would appreciate if you would approve that. Uh, I also have here tonight with me, Mr. Rex Young. He is here with O'Curse Energy, the company that's developing the project for Pine Gate Renewables, my associate, Sarah Keller, and also Matt Aker, uh, who's in the back with the hat. Matt is, Matt is the project manager for this multi-hundred acre facility. And as to any specific technical requirements, Matt would be the one who could answer, uh, any question. So with that, is there anything that we could provide you, um, to help you get to a yes before we leave Danbury?
Okay.
I'm already yes, so I don't think so.
Which we appreciate, Rick.
Do you have any questions, Wayne, that you want to ask?
How durable is this fence versus a chain link fence?
The, the answer is equal, but that's something that Matt Aker would be better. You need to hear that not from a lawyer, but somebody who has actually touched these fences and has installed them, and I think, Matt, if you would address that.
Good evening, Matt Aker, project manager for Lit Creek Solar. Thank y'all for your time. Uh, the, the metal wire, the mesh gauge is comparable to a, a chain link fence. It's just the holes are a little bit larger to let those small, smaller, uh, animals pass through.
What about, uh, deer jumping into it, getting their legs hung up in it?
I, I'm not familiar with that specific scenario, uh, but I do know that with the six-foot tall chain link with two-foot of barbed wire on top, we have witnessed deer jumping over that and, and slicing themselves. I think the ordinance as it stands now is eight-foot tall with two feet of, of barbed wire on top of that as well. I, I can only imagine it, it'd get worse from there.
I see it look like a big gap in there, in the fence itself, versus a chain link fence, where the gap's not as big. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all I got right there.
Go ahead. Um, you got any questions?
Uh, the main question I have is, when we approved this originally in October, I think of 2019, I believe was our original approval date on this. Yep, rezoning petition was approved October 1st, 2019. What, why has the change occurred since then? I know you went over it briefly in your synopsis up front, the attorney did, but, uh, was this not available at that time, or what has made the reason for the amendment to this?
Before you jump, full disclosure, I joined Pine Gate in January of, uh, this year, so I'll let Tom speak to that.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the big change, I, I believe this fence has been available for a longer period of time. Pine Gate, as it has evolved as a young company, it's one of the, it's one of the fastest growing, actually, I think it is the fastest growing renewable, uh, energy company in the southeast. Uh, since that time, they became sensitive to this issue because we were just starting to put these, uh, larger facilities online, the ones that you had to build to meet Duke's specs. And that was the time that people were starting to raise this issue. Uh, Pine Gate being actually sensitive to these things made a culture, company cultural commitment to try to do that in all of its projects. So that was what changed since then. It was an awareness and then a commitment.
That's all I have to do, sir. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Just, just to add to that, this is, um, we, as, at Pine Gate, we, we try to be the best neighbors possible, because we realize we cover a lot of areas and we touch a lot of neighbors that surround the project. Um, not only are we looking at this habitat-friendly fence, uh, we look at bee pollinator programs that don't, not only, um, helps with bee habitats and, and wildlife flowers, uh, we also look at sheep grazing. So there's, there's a lot of options that are earth-friendly that we try to incorporate in our projects when possible.
Thank you. Um, I have a question. What type of material is this fence made out of, this permeable fence?
Similar to a typical chain link fence. Uh, I think it's seven or six gauge, uh, wire mesh with steel posts that, that hold it upright.
So, does it give or something the reason that animals can go through it?
Larger holes, and I think in your packet, you'll see a fox passing through a hole.
Yeah.
They're just able to, to pass through the site instead of getting hung up or having to hike around it.
And you, if a fox can get through it, how do you know a child can't get through it?
This has been approved by the National Electric Code, so we don't make these, uh, calls, but you, it has to meet that, and once it was tested and approved, we, you just have to assume that a small child cannot.
Okay, well, seeing kids the size of a fox, so I don't, I don't know.
Foxes are, are more agile, actually smaller than you might think that they are, but, um, that they are more agile and can squeeze through holes in the ground and other places that a child could not.
What about, uh, pets going through there, dogs and pets?
A, a small dog could, a large dog could not. Uh, a, a feral cat certainly could, yes.
So the assumption is if they get through it, they can get back out of it?
That's correct. That, that is correct. Uh, interestingly, wild turkeys, if you know, are, are tend, they walk more than they fly, although they can fly, and they have been seen walking around these facilities instead of trying to fly over. So it's not just mammals, it's other animals like that.
Well, um, what about the animals getting in there around the power grids or the, the, so I wasn't on the board when, of course, this solar farm was approved, so I don't know that much about it. I would think that idea would be to keep animals out of there. I mean, couldn't they damage or do any harm to, or?
In, in theory, a deer that jumped over and landed on a panel could crack a panel, but they're far enough away from the fence, that's not going to happen. I have never heard, I would turn to my colleagues here to see if they have ever heard of animals, uh, getting killed or, uh, damaging anything. It's, it's really people you're trying to keep out. You have, like, this company is investing, is about $80 million, approximately?
Maybe.
Yeah, seventy-five to eighty million dollars, they're investing in your county, and they don't want that equipment to be, the wires to be stolen. They don't want somebody coming into vandalism. So that's really, now, if a person got in, yeah, a person could get, uh, injured, and that's why you have the National Electric Code that keeps the distance separation.
That's all the questions I have. Um, Chairman Nicholson, what, what are your questions?
Yeah, so basically, the fence, you're trying to put up, it's the same thing as woven wire, am I correct?
Same thing as what?
Woven wire.
Uh, is that what you would call woven?
Same, same gauge.
It's about same gauge. If the holes are, if you can see my hands, the holes are about so big.
Okay, what would you say the diameter of the hole would be?
Matt, what would be the diameter of the hole?
I want to say four by four, but I'm looking to confirm.
I think it's larger than four by four, but yeah.
I would just say to you, the reason that he's asking you these specific questions, he is the owner of a fencing company.
Right, okay.
So he is very familiar with this.
The main problem with this right here is, and you have to agree, eight-foot tall, two-foot of barbed wire is a bit excessive, I do agree with that, but however, what you're, what you're doing is, you're slanting to this lighter brand of wire, because I've, I've put up miles of woven wire, I've put up miles of chain link. Uh, the woven wire does not last like the chain does. Uh, also, you're also like a kid, you come flying, because there's so much easier to stick your foot through. Now, if you're worried about small animals, don't worry about chain link, because no matter what, you're not going to be able to get this wire completely on the ground all the way around. They're going to find their way in, they do it every night. Uh, next concern is, would always be, and it's, uh, your chairman, the vice chairman brought up, can y'all still hear me?
Yes.
They said four connections, so I'll just make sure. So, uh, somebody's animal gets inside there, well, next thing you know, you gotta land on a hole, wanting to get inside to get your animal out, and animal will come back out. Now, one thing that Duke Power is currently doing right now, is they're putting up like quarter-inch mesh, half-inch mesh fence and spending twenty, thirty times the amount of grade of chain link just to keep animals out, because of some kind of damage they can do, and that's what's going on right now. Now, if I'm also not mistaken, four distance has privacy slats in, is that correct?
Has, no, it does not. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, uh, the privacy slats.
Let me, let me correct that. Uh, our project manager says there are some areas designed to have some slats in it.
Okay, so this, this woven wire type material is not made with privacy slats, because there's no way for it to slide down and hold in place, so you're creating another problem right there. And, uh, and that's why I said, my experience with both types right here, we're getting a cheaper grade wire, I would much rather see you guys stick with the, the uh, chain link fence, mainly because it's got a two-inch diameter, two-inch mesh, hard for anybody to climb it. And it, it does help prevent keeping animals out, but just like I said, in certain areas, they don't matter what you do, if a small animal wants to get in, they'll get in.
Well, let me just repeat again. Our purpose is not to keep animals out, but to allow them to pass through. That, that is, that is the...
They'll, they'll do that. Because I can figure with, um, several places like this, small animals will still find their way through chain, uh, that's not a problem. But my main concern is, is keeping the public access. And when you're starting to go like this, you're starting to have more of an invite in them coming in, because it's easier, especially for a kid. Uh, not sure what we're kind of counting on from, but a lot of kids, it's kind of like I was growing up, you get kind of curious, if you've got something that easy to climb, that accessible, it's just pretty much doing an invite to it.
Well, I, I don't want us to be that argumentative, but if it were a chain link fence, I think you just said that would be easier to climb.
No, that's not what he said.
I said, okay, well, uh, in any event, I, I just can only repeat that we have, um, our intention is not to keep animals out, but to encourage animals to pass through these very large facilities, so that they're not prohibited from reaching where they naturally would be.
And I agree with you, but I think my intention would be more keeping people out, so, you know, animals, animals, actually, like I said, the animals will still find holes in the chain link fence underneath and places, uh, until they come through, so I'm asking, that's my main concern. Mine's more keeping the public access.
Well, well, according to the National Electric Code, this does do that, and that's, otherwise it would not, uh, meet that standard.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, but when you're talking about something that big of a hole in the mesh, takes it a lot easier, I mean, you know, like I said, you can go wander, I know, same thing when I was a little boy, grew up in the woods, if you've got something like that, that's easy to do, no more problem climbing. With a two-inch mesh chain link, no, you're not, you can't get your foot in there, you can't get your fingers in there, so it's a lot easier to, you know, when we started looking at this thing back in 2019, and we seen that the fence was, you know, the solar field was going to be secured, basically, and, you know, keeping people out, yeah, I, I agree that that is...
Okay. Does the board, he has no more questions to do, does anyone else have any more?
Just got one, a couple other things. Uh, I would note the planning board approved this unanimously, is that correct?
It was unanimous, yes, it was.
Also, um, did you check to see what size those holes are? The only reason, I'm just curious if they're the same size that we put up to keep goats in. They're four, four by four, I think. Are they bigger than that?
Struggling to, uh, access that information at this point.
Okay.
Um, but I think you've seen these type of fans over in Yadkinville.
Yeah.
What was your response on it?
It's, it's, I mean, if, the fencing is, uh, and I look at it from the electrical, because I have to do inspections there, it meets all the requirements of the NEC for grounding and purpose, just a different option of fencing. Uh, the board, again, they talked about the wildlife, it's not, you know, felt it was adequate, you know, if anybody wants to get in anything, they'll get in it. Uh, but there'll also be tree buffers around the fencing. The fencing shouldn't be as visible as it is in this picture here. You'll see the small trees. There's a landscaping portion of this too, that should be planted, to eventually the fencing, you'll see perhaps some gates and things, but you won't see a lot of fencing if we follow the landscaping plan that was put in place. Uh, I mean, any of those, it's fencing. I, I'm not an expert on fencing. Uh, it looks like about four by four squares, uh, and there's a whole lot of it, uh, in this 600-some acre farm in Yadkin County, but I'm not...
It looks like four by four to you, but you hadn't measured it, so it kind of looks like that.
I stopped to get out, I'm usually on the way into work.
No, my, my way is rough, but this is my profession, I do this stuff in that, so...
So, is, you think they're four by four, just looking at them without actually getting out and measuring them?
I, I would say they're, maybe that, they're square, so I would assume that. I couldn't...
I think it's one by five.
Looking at them, driving 30, 40 miles an hour, just glancing.
I'm just curious.
I have a question, or if you go with this, were you still planning on putting the barbed wire on top?
Uh, no, ma'am. The, uh, and that is part of the, um, habitat friendly part of this. It's not required by the National Electric Code when you go to eight feet. This is, we're already one foot above that in height, but as Matt had said, there's a point at which, when you're above eight feet, and then you have barbed wire, that's the point where deer do injure themselves. And, uh, and, you know, I, I don't know if any of you have seen deer jump. Um, we have a farm with fencing, they go over it very gracefully at a very high, uh, very, at a great height, but we're pushing what a deer can do. When you put barbed wire on an eight-foot fence, uh, they can injure themselves.
All by the way, it's just that it does have the privacy slats. What y'all plan on putting chain link in with privacy slats, or y'all plan on using this material with privacy slats?
Matt, you're gonna?
One more time, sir, I'm sorry.
The area that has the privacy slats, what y'all plan on using the chain link, but the privacy slats are using this material as well, and put the privacy slats in?
If the animal-friendly fence passed tonight, there would be no, um, slats. Uh, there are some areas where I expect to, uh, net additional plants and, and add to that vegetative buffer.
Okay, so y'all, well, y'all, so you're also pulling out the privacy slab part?
That's correct. This, this wildlife fence is not, um, manufactured to support the, the privacy slats or screening.
Right, but there will be substantial buffers on the outside, so you can see it.
Or mayors have any more questions?
I understand the whole wildlife farm, but it's like you said, wildlife, it still find a way, the chain link fence, I can do that. Uh, my aspect going forward by keeping the public out.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Nicholson. Okay, um... Do we need to take action tonight?
No, we don't. You still have questions on that. My suggestion would be, you've done it before, and plan to be, so we'll have questions, and you want to know the exact dimensions and all those things, you can move it to your right number meeting on June and have a good question answered. If that, if we're more comfortable with that, that's what you use completely.
I can measure it tonight on the way home, and I'm happy to give the inspections. I apologize, I just don't have with me at this point. Perhaps some of the fencing itself would have been useful to sample size to, yeah, that way, absolutely. That way, I wouldn't be on the side of the road.
There you go.
Well, and, and instead of waiting on the white line and the plan, they can just move to the June 14 thing.
That's, so we do that, we do that.
We've done that with solar farm stuff.
Okay, and I'm gonna be real honest with you. David, do you have anyone else on your, um, planning zoning, uh, committee where you had a unanimous approval? Do you have anyone at all? anyone at all that has the expertise that our chairman has as far as fencing goes?
No.
Would you say, so what I would say is, is I am not comfortable at this point hearing our chairman with his concerns, it would be like when I was superintendent of schools, and someone that had never been in a classroom, and they asked me what curriculum was being taught, and then they asked Wayne, who has an expertise, an EMS in the fire department, things of that nature, I don't think he would have the expertise I would have as far as education. I have some concerns after listening to our chairman here, and, um, I certainly am at the position where I'd feel very strongly, uh, missed by chairman, uh, waiting till the fourteenth.
Okay.
That's just me, that's just one, that's just one opinion.
Do I need a motion to table it to the fourteenth or anything? Consensus?
Consensus.
Okay, all right, is that okay with you, Chairman Nicholson, to wait till the fourteenth? Okay, everybody good with that? All right, if y'all could, uh, bring us back some samples, maybe, and, and have, uh, the specs and things, then we'll take a look at it on the fourteenth. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Coming out tonight. All right, moving on to the next, um, request, the ordinance revision.
Okay, your next item is North Carolina General Statute 160D ordinance revision. Uh, this is a request by the county to amend all affected state, county land use regulations, plans, and reference land use maps to reflect the change of North Carolina General Statute reference from 153A for counties, and 160A for cities, to 160D as mandated by the North Carolina General Assembly. The General Assembly has adopted this general statute, 160D, as a comprehensive rewrite of the planning and zoning statutes in North Carolina in session law 2019-111. The effective date of the legislation was January first, 2021, uh, but due to COVID-19, communities were given until August first, 2021, to incorporate the required changes into the land use documents. Uh, it basically requires that all county statutes, as far as what I do for planning, inspections, includes quite a variety of things within that statute, fell under North Carolina General Statute 153A. The municipalities, City of King, Town of Wannacove, and Town of Danbury, similar statutes for land use planning, zoning, building code, all fell under 160A. This is a composite consolidation of these statutes into 160D that eliminated some conflicts. Uh, there are inherent differences between municipalities and county government, but this, uh, has narrowed the gap and made some things more consistent as far as how we look at, uh, planning and land use controls in the, uh, in, in, under the general statute. Uh, and also, uh, by reference, uh, if, uh, this has already gone into effect, uh, this is a procedural thing, uh, it is really, uh, not something that we really can do anything else, but do it. Uh, I had Ty Browder, uh, and I sat down, and we went over these statutory changes, he looked at what I had gone through, our different ordinances and regulations, and proposed, and, uh, he made a few corrections, and this is the result of those corrections. I can go through, uh, each one of them, there are fourteen separate articles, as you'll look below, uh, these are the things that, uh, it covers, uh, and how that if we, uh, from a legal standpoint, how I do my job, and how the county has to, to look at land use guidelines, subdivision, zoning, building code, and the legal provisions that we go if we do enforcement and things like that. Uh, these are all mandated by the general statutes, and again, it's been effective on January first, 2021. And I'll, have you, if you've gone on or have any particular questions, I'll be glad to ask, or if you'd like me to go through each one of them, I'd be glad to do that also.
Questions?
I have one question, but I don't want to even go through all of them.
You know, I can read fast.
Not that fast. The only question I have is that on the, um, next to last page, no, third page from the back, it talks about this evidentiary hearing, I think that's the changes, that's the addition or change that you made, right?
If it's in bold, it will show the change.
It's in bold.
Yes.
So, so is there any particular thing we need to know about that evidentiary hearing, or how that's conducted, or what?
It was more of a terminology thing, uh, than just the statement of how putting it in, that an evidentiary hearing would be, they're presenting evidence, that's a quasi-judicial type hearing, judicial. Uh, as you remember, when we had conditional use, we had to do the quasi-judicial procedures where you find, finding a fact, you were, uh, no experte communications, you had to be quiet, and you know, when we went through, what's that, four and a years ago, five years ago, I've lost track of it, we made the major change at that point, going to conditional zoning, there are no more conditional, uh, use or special use rezoning permits. They do allow special use permits, but it is, it's got to be held in a quasi-judicial manner, which in, in our land use guidelines, there's only one special permit that is issued, and that would be done by the Board of Adjustments in a special, uh, case to determine the ability to extend a, a deadline, uh, and we haven't had one of those in my thirty-three years here.
So that's the second part of my question, does this require us to go back, do quasi-judicial?
No.
In any circumstance?
No. The board is not the Board of Adjustments, you have not given your, granted yourself that power, uh, in some cases, a small municipality may have a planning board, uh, and a Board of Adjustments be the same members, could be that the town councils could do that also. Uh, but you have to change hats at that point, and you have to, uh, add differently, and hear the, hear the, hear it differently than you would in our typical zoning cases. Now you can talk to everyone, you're not subject to any, uh, private, uh, you can't just, you can't talk to this person, you have to hear it in evidentiary hearing during the process of the meeting, now you can speak freely, and it makes it, it's a legislative decision, which a simple majority, uh, will pass the case, you don't need a, uh, four fish votes for a super majority.
That's my only question.
All right.
I'm good.
I was here when all this was going on five years ago, I don't have anything.
The School of Government had, uh, webinars, I, I sit through many hours of webinars and listening to this, so, uh, it, it is, it's been well thought out, uh, and, and it will be the, the, it is the law now, I have to, I've even changed on our public advertisement this time, I went to 160D is our advertising, uh, statute that we, we go with. And Ty and I went over a couple of questions with him, and he felt comfortable with everything that was, was put in there. The one thing that you can do, and speaking of, uh, you could give the County Board of Adjustments, uh, the one thing that was different, uh, in our subdivision regulations, we adopted in 1995, uh, there was a provision in there that the Board of Commissioners could hear any appeals to the subdivision regulations. Uh, I don't think we've ever, ever had an appeal to, about the subdivision, that's pretty much all me, uh, but you hear them as major subdivisions as they come through for rezoning processes, but you could assign any, um, hearing or appeal to the County Board of Adjustments if you choose to at some, some future time. I didn't put anything in there, uh, to try anything new, I just was wanting to cover what we, was necessary to comply with the, uh, the requirements, we get it in our ordinances.
Chairman Nicholson, do you have any questions? We can't hear you, but it sounded like you said you're good, or?
I'm good.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Yeah, he's eating, okay.
There is a, uh, there is an ability to adopt our, our official, uh, maps, uh, it, uh, making motions in this is a little, it's, it's a little complicated, you want to make sure you cover everything on that, uh, but you also, uh, would adopt the county zoning maps, which is a GIS layer, uh, that is held, Greg Hunsucker monitors that, I have old paper zoning maps that go back to nineteen eighty-three, uh, with zoning on it, that I, I still maintain and update as I do a rezoning case, I, I hand draw the maps like Jake used to, like we used to do when Jake was the county mapper, uh, it's actually the maps he used to use, uh, when we were at our tax mapping, uh, still keep those in, in effect, but a combination of that, in any land use documents, our land use guideline, uh, the 2035 plan, uh, all this would relate back to these, these are officially adopted documents and maps, it would all fall under this as 160D, so, uh, with your motions, if you, when you make them, to incorporate the mapping also into that motion.
Greg updated to your stuff.
Greg and I talked about it, and he felt comfortable, he, I mean, he does it all the time, I send him the stuff as I get it, and, uh, if we have any questions, we go down there and work together to, he'll correct it if I find some errors or something on the map.
Okay, do we need to take action on this one tonight?
And the planning board, uh, approved unanimously.
We need a motion to approve this with the mapping?
Yeah, do you need a motion that includes the general statute 160D ordinance and, uh, includes the 2035 plan in it, or how do you want the motion made, David?
Well, let's see, the recommendation, the board voted unanimously to recommend the above, uh, proposed changes to the county zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and land use documents, including by reference, uh, you might want to use that last statement, Ronnie, and just put 160D to be incorporated in it, and I think that covered everything that, that, uh, I was talking about in this, uh, proposal. It's on the last page.
Go.
When you see planning board recommendation, just add the 160D, the change, make the text changes to 160, future reference 160D, and then all the rest of it.
We hear you.
What are you crunching on?
Jake wants to know what you're-
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, um, our NCGS 160D ordinance revision, the board, uh, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend the above proposed changes to the county zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and land use documents, including by reference, the GIS layer of zoning maps, watershed maps, and flood maps, better insurance rate maps, including land use maps shown within the Stokes County 2035 plan, and other previously adopted land development maps, to comply with the current North Carolina state law, uh, in reference back to, uh, NCGS 160D.
I think you covered it.
All right, do I have a second? All those in favor? Ah? All right.
I have one last item, it's just an item of general concern, uh, last year in August, the board had voted a moratorium on, uh, solar facilities, uh, over fifty acres, and had tasked, uh, to start looking into other alternate, or more regulations, or regulations concerning this, the planning board, uh, we have been getting together, uh, after the first of the year, trying to work on this, uh, uh, again, due to COVID, we've had some missed meetings, and we have been, uh, we've just been busy in our office, we're wide open, uh, more so than we were, um, the last five years, but I've got some information, and what, uh, what I'm proposing, some things that, uh, that I had come up with, uh, can't, can't blame the new members, but the old members didn't give me a lot of direction on doing this, so, uh, so, uh, some of this I come up with, I've reviewed over ordinances around the, uh, uh, different, the state, uh, the country, by looking at it, and those are some things that the board, and we've had a couple of work session meetings to talk about it, uh, and, uh, I need some input from the board, because the moratorium, uh, was effective as of August twenty-fourth, uh, and it gave us a year to work on this. And again, uh, the, the planning board has looked at this, and I can give you some of their statements, they, uh, would, uh, one of the requests was, is if they could extend the moratorium on, uh, to take a look at it, to even further develop it. Uh, the biggest concern that we, uh, were getting from our board members was that we've approved two large-scale facilities, uh, over eleven hundred acres of, of facilities, and, uh, we're just beginning to see the first stages of development on the Lit Creek project was, which was approved in 2019. We have another approximately four hundred ninety-nine point six acre, uh, facility that was approved in 2020, Bear Branch, uh, that hasn't gotten started, or, um, has moved forward at this point. Uh, the board was concerned that, uh, to keep, uh, approving these, or keep receiving these applications without ever seeing the first site, large-scale development site, uh, that there would be things that are, that would be missing on a planning perspective. And, uh, again, it's the board's prerogative to look at this from a land use standpoint, this is what we do here, uh, to see if that it's, uh, if we have adequate procedures. This idea of the fencing was brought up tonight, is the type of fencing, we really had no, uh, fencing type, we basically, in our ordinance, because we'd never had a request before, we just put, uh, solar farms, wind farms, and you'll see this looks at alternative energy, just not solar, as would be wind, there's only one large-scale wind farm in the, in the state, that's the Amazon facility in Currituck County on the coast, not probably going to happen here, but it was part of our ordinance. Uh, but alternative energy, it, it's, it's a part of our lives, but the county and each jurisdiction can have their own say-so on how they want to deal with it. Again, with a thousand acres, we were depending on the developer to tell us what they wanted. And they put their restrictions in it, and, uh, it was up to the board to agree, and the majority agreed, and so there are two large-scale facilities. And that was a concern of the planning board, and they also were a part of the process, they approved, uh, these facilities to move them on to you as the Board of Commissioners, uh, for, uh, final disposition. But their concern was, they think that they're not really in favor of any more of these large-scale facilities at this point in time. So, I'm not really going to go over this, I know this wasn't necessarily an agenda, but I want to get it in your hands, because I need to get some input from the elected officials at this point. What is it you see, if there's anything on here you like, or things you don't like, uh, because we need to narrow it down, because if we're not going to extend the moratorium, uh, which is in our new, uh, 160D statutes on how you go about doing that, and that would be up to Ty, uh, to get with you and work on that, uh, we do need to adopt something, or the moratorium just ceases, and we go back to the way we were, what's already currently in ordinance. So, uh, I, I said, I'm looking for input, I tried to put as much information, uh, in this, when I, when the questions, the black is what was, uh, proposed, and the red is what we talked about in the planning, uh, workshop, and, uh, we'll continue on working on it, but I told the planning board, I needed some direction from y'all, uh, to make sure that we're going to cover everything, so this just doesn't come in piecemeal, try to get a more comprehensive, uh, view of it from everybody's perspective.
Well, David, I, I was, I certainly remember most of, of what you're talking about, but, um, and I appreciate this here, but, of course, I think nobody can, until we get a chance to look over it, study it, uh, and then come back to you with what we like, what we don't like, and as far as extension of the moratorium and the, you know, I think, uh, that needs some definitive time for us to think through it, we got two new members here, that was not even on board when we went over this, with the moratorium, I think, what, we have a six-month or a year?
It was a year.
Year moratorium, uh, certain sizes, et cetera?
It's up to fifty acres.
Yep, and so Wayne and Sonya, Commissioner Scotts, and, uh, Barnacass, were not even on our board at that time, so, I think we need to give everybody a chance to really-
Well, this will disturb your interest back any, because it's- This was to stir your interest back in it, because it's coming back up, and I didn't, like I said, we had been working on it, and we missed a couple of meetings, which threw us behind schedule. So now, again, these are things to think about. These are things the board has discussed, and some of the board members were pretty adamant about the things they'd like to see in it. And there were some general things that you directed me to do, but site-specific, just like tonight, talking about fencing options, well, who would have really thought much about fencing until this brought up? Fence is a fence, and like I said, you know, there are different types of fencing. For my perspective, a fence is a fence. But in this case, there may be specific types of fencing we, as the county, or you as the county, elected officials want to see in every facility. And consistency would be important as we deal, as I deal with the developer, being consistent with the regulations and trying to treat everybody the same is the one thing that it really helps me do my job. If I'm not giving anybody a favorite here, you all follow the same guidelines, and everybody is playing by the same rules, it makes life a little easier for me.
That makes sense.
I understand that.
Mr. Barney Castle, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just going to look over it.
Yeah, if you've got any questions, I'm in the office, and if I don't answer the phone, I'll call you back.
Mr. Morris, do you have any? Chairman Nicholson, do you have anything you want to add to this? You'll get a copy of it when you get back, I guess. Okay. Okay, and not being on the board when you did all this, you know, I just need some time to, myself and Commissioner Barney Castle, to come up to speed on it, but my first inclination would be to extend it until we know more. Because like you said, neither one of these have even been built yet. You know, we don't know what the ramifications are and the long-term effects are going to be until, you know, we have one and see it operational and see kind of how this is going to go. And I think, you know, I wouldn't want to rush any decisions until we have a better idea of how this is going to play out with the two that we, that were previously approved.
Well, there's a lot of information in there. Like I said, if you have any questions, I don't have all the answers, but, and there's different viewpoints around the state on large-scale solar development. Again, it's moving westward, as the eastern part of the state has took the first phase of the development, but now it's moving into the western counties. So like I said, if you have any questions, just give me a call.
Thanks.
Twenty-fourth of August. We just need, if you're interested in it, it would be something to talk to Ty about. I was reading over the moratorium, but I, you know, it's not my job to be the attorney. It's just that if you do extensions, you have to go through a procedure, just like you did to enact the moratorium on this particular thing. And, but one of the things we're doing is showing progress, this is part of the progress we're showing. And again, I don't want to blame COVID, everybody blames COVID for everything, but we did miss some meetings due to this, and since our every other month schedule, we ended up, that makes it even worse for our standpoint. But we're back on track with regular meetings, and had a couple of work sessions. If we can have additional work sessions, the board's been really good about showing up and join in on a discussion, they all have opinions on what they want to see.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate all the information. Is there anything else?
Make a motion adjourned.
Give a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Back to eating.
Looks like he's froze up.
Yes, he is. He's probably stuffed.
He probably is.
He heard me this.
Because he's been eating the whole time.